Six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone here for public input? Anyone here for public input? All right, review and approve council agenda. Go move.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approved ten twenty-four twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Item B, approved eleven fourteen twenty-two two city council meeting minutes. Item C, approved eleven twenty-one twenty-two two city council meeting minutes. Item D, approved twelve five twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Item E, approved twenty twenty-three write-offs. Item F, approved twenty twenty-three appointments. Item G, approved twenty twenty-three landscape coordinator agreement. Item H, approved twenty twenty-three seasonal and part-time salary schedules. Item I, approved twenty twenty-three union and non-union salary schedule. Item J, approved Avion, is it Avon or Avion? Avon C fifty first responder kits. Item K, approved resolution approving, approve agency agreement for federal funds. Item L, approved resolution maintenance worker collective bargaining unit MOU for contributions to HSA. Item M, approved resolution on non-union collective bargaining unit MOU for contribution to HAS. Item. Item, that should have been HSA.
Yeah.
Item N, approved resolution on police administration collective bargaining unit MOU for contributions to HSA. Item O, approved resolution on police sergeants collective bargaining unit MOU for contributions to HSA. Item P, approved resolution on police officer collecting bargain, collective bargaining unit MOU for contributions to HSA. Item Q, approved resolution opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters. Item I, approved resolution regarding excess TIF funds. Item S, approved resolution regarding investment policy. Item two, approved city administrator's performance review. And item U, approved employment agreement for Shawna Johnson. I would like to pull C. I would like to have F and U pulled. F and, F and U, okay.
No, just F. F and U.
F and you.
Slash, you.
That's what we got. Anything else? Somebody want to move to approve the rest?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. I pulled C because it, uh, it needs to be redone, so we'll.
You don't need to do anything with it.
No, I'm just gonna pull it, we'll bring it back at the next meeting. Okay, Mike, F.
Um, cup, just a couple of things here. First off, um, Vic has shown interest in a planning commission. I'd like to make an appointment, uh, for the term that would end on twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-five to Vic Schultz. That'd be a three-year term, I believe.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, yep.
Yep.
Second to that?
I'll second it.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. All right.
Uh, secondly.
I abstained.
I didn't give you a chance.
Secondly, um, I'd like to take my position back as acting mayor. It's due to some comments that were made, I guess, in our last meeting. So, I would like to ask to take that position back.
I would make a motion to do that.
Second. My only concern is.
Can we do that?
Frank's not here. I would prefer that he be here because he is the acting mayor. I don't have any problem either one. I just, he's not here.
Well, I'll pull my motion then.
Bring it up in the next meeting.
Okay.
Then we'll leave that blank.
You can leave that one open and then, but would you, uh, uh, make sure that you appoint, approve all of the other?
Yep. What else have you got on, on the appointments? Anything? Okay, you want to move to approve all appointments except the acting mayor?
F, subtracting the acting mayor.
Right?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. And you?
You, uh, I just have some questions on this agreement. I went through it quite a few times. There are some clerk treasures that have to be, uh, taken out of, um, the wording here. One of the first one is under witness.
Yep, we'll take all those out. I thought we caught all of that.
Um, it's under witness duties. There's one, two in there. I know there's a few more. Oh, page five.
Yeah, we'll just go through it. We can have between Paul, we'll have Paul's. Carrie may be looking.
Those types, I think. Um, then I do have some questions. Under. First one is under hours of work. It's kind of a double standard in this paragraph, I believe. If you want to read the first sentence, and then the second and third sentence kind of counteracts the first sentence.
What does it say?
It has to, well, you want me to read it?
What does it contradict?
It is, it is understood that the position of city administrator requires attendance to evening meals occasional at weekend meetings. It is understood by the employee that additional compensation and company tary time shall not be allowed for such additional expenditure, expenditure of time. And then, the next sentence says, "It is further understood that the employee may absent him or herself from the office for a reasonable extent in consideration of extraordinary time expenses for evening and weekend meetings other than normal work hours."
It's the definition of a salaried employee. That's how it's worked. The contract's not changed since I spent here nineteen years ago.
A salaried employee is not a hourly employee.
Exactly. Right, that's not what.
If she works twelve hours today, she only gets paid for eight, basically. I mean, basically.
Right.
But then if she works, she can get, the four, the four hours are comp time in reality. It gives her some opportunity. I don't like that word either.
But salaried employees do not receive comp time.
We're not asking to have comp time, but it is.
That's what you're saying here.
What it's saying is, is that you don't necessarily have hours of operation. I'm not willing to change it in my agreement if we need to get into a discussion about making changes. This is really just a description of how a salaried employee works. When they, when they work extra hours, they may be off on a Friday because, yeah. That's how it's worked for every single person that's been a salaried employee here.
That's a typical supervisor.
I'm sorry to bring it up, I guess.
That's a typical supervisor.
Couple other little ones here. Section twelve. I agree to pay, um, for what has to be done except for attending national.
It's been in my contract from the beginning and I'm not willing to change that. That's what I was hired under and I've continued to have that for that period of time.
And the second, next paragraph is international city management association.
And that's been something that's.
What good is an international or a national do for a small town of eight thousand to be part of?
I've always been a member of.
We don't get any information when you attend the, I mean, is it doing us good?
You, I, I would, I would argue that, I mean, and there's been times when, when she doesn't go and there's times, I mean, if we were financially struck, we could tell her, you know, probably that we can't afford to send her. But you'd be surprised that when you go to some of those meetings with, especially now with the ledge, how many people know where the ledge is? So, it, uh, it, it's getting more popular. And, and it's, they're not all that bad. I mean, we all know that we go to some meetings and they're not all that great and we go to some meetings that are great, so I, I think she's done a good job of picking and choosing.
I'm not arguing about the other ones. I'm just talking about international.
Well, there's the National Mayor's Conference.
We'll tell you that the other department tends to attend their national conferences as well. When they have, there's a lot of benefit and value into that. So, I wasn't prepared tonight to come and negotiate a contract. These are things that have been in place.
You put it on the agenda, it's here.
It has to be approved. It has to be reviewed and approved by the council to move forward, is my point.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like, I don't see anything here about the annual performance review and I'd just like to see something about the annual performance.
That wouldn't be in her job description.
Well, I don't care where we put it as long as we have the annual performance review set. That's most concerned for me is, we don't need another seven or eight year gap where we don't do a performance review. And I'd just like to see that put in someplace where the annual performance review is gonna take place.
I'd do that at the end of the meeting.
In section seven.
That'd be fine.
Vic, uh, section seven of the agreement is, uh, performance evaluation. And there is a notation in that section that there would be an annual performance review. And then that review, uh, would take place on the employment anniversary date.
Agreed.
Or, uh, such time within, should be thirty days, but I see it's thirty and then the number three, so we just have a little Scrivener thing to fix there.
I just would like to see it someplace, so I didn't.
So it's in there.
I didn't see it in here.
Section seven, that's where it's at.
So it is. Okay, I can take that off. Somebody want to move to approve you or is there anything else?
I'll make a motion that we approve you.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to one. All right, regular agenda items. Public hearing. Please take notice that the City of Wake Park Council will hold a public hearing at Wake Park City Hall, nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, Wake Park, Minnesota, on Monday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM or soon thereafter to consider revision of Appendix B, Wake Park Schedule of Fee Charges. A copy is available at City Hall for review. All interested persons are invited to attend or send written comments. It was dated the first day of December. Signed by Adriana Brenney. Is there anyone here for that public meeting at six forty-three? Anyone here for the public hearing on the fee schedule? Anyone? Come on, clock. We gotta start timing them better.
I'll make a motion that we close the public meeting.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed at six forty-four. What else did we have to do with that?
Move to approve.
There we go.
Uh, fee schedule for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. Item B, final twenty twenty-three levy and budget, capital improvement plan and gambling donation requests. Who wants that one?
I'll start. Okay, so before you is the proposed, um, tax levy that was certified, um, it was certified, pre-certified to the county in September and our final one is presented tonight. The levy is proposed, um, at ten million three hundred seventeen thousand six hundred twenty dollars and that is a fourteen point nine nine percent increase from twenty twenty-two. The second part is the budget and that is proposed to be eleven million four hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars. And that is a five point three percent increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, and additionally, um, that's presented as the five-year CIP and staffing plans, um, for, that was in the packet for you and then after these motions, there will be the gambling donation list that is being asked to re, to approve.
Hey, consul, any questions?
I just wanted to make it clear, and I think I talked to Carla a little bit about this before, yes. We need to get some extra money on our CIP for this year, which all of that is going to be applied towards road projects for twenty twenty-three. Is that right? So that we can try to get a hold of, or ahead of the scale?
When, when we finalize the TIF payments, yes, that will become available. That's correct.
That's TIF was, yeah, that was a separate issue, that TIF.
All right, somebody want to move to approve resolution twelve nineteen twenty-two? Some move?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. I think that's all we have to do on any of those.
You have to do the gambling motion.
Oh.
That's a separate motion.
Gambling one, yeah, here we go. Got too many.
That was, um, I can tell you. Second here. Um, what is, what is proposed to be, um, given for donations for the year would be seventy thousand five hundred dollars.
And for those of you at home, that's not out of city coffers. That is out of, uh, gambling like money that we get from, uh, anybody that has gambling license in the City of Wake Park pays the City of Wake Park ten percent. We then can designate that to any other nonprofit, so that's what we do with that money. That is not taxed dollar. Somebody want to move to approve those?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. Item C, twenty twenty-three position and pay grade listings.
Typically, we just put this underneath the consent agenda, but we have it on there regularly, which is completely fine. Essentially, what we do every year, um, is have the council approve all of our existing positions and the pay grades, um, that they, that they are all appointed to. So that's just an annual thing that we, um, do for approval.
Great.
I'll make a motion that we approve that scale as written.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. Item D, ordinance eighty-five, local sales and use tax.
So what you have before you is the next step in the process that we have on our, um, local, uh, sales and use tax that was approved by the voters, um, this past November for the, um, public safety facility. You passed a resolution at your last meeting. Now, what we have before you is an ordinance that actually enacts that sales tax. Um, and we need to approve that in order for us to move forward with the implementation. Which just for those watching, it'll be an additional half a percent of sales tax that would be proposed to go, um, into effect in April of twenty twenty-three.
Great, consul?
On this, this amount of, of, well, it's twenty million dollars. Uh, is that including land costs as long as building or where are the land costs coming in once we get going on this project?
The total amount of money that we have for sales tax is twenty million dollars. So whatever we choose to put, if we choose to purchase land, we have to have that incorporated into that twenty million. We cannot exceed the twenty million dollars. Or if it's not land that we're purchasing and it's something that we own, then that twenty million goes towards the safety. So it can be, it can include land if necessary, but it's, can't be above that twenty million for the land.
Okay, if the project, say it comes by a miracle under, under the amount, where does that extra money go to?
It doesn't, it ends.
It ends.
It ends automatically.
It's up to twenty million.
To twenty million. So if we build it for seventeen million five hundred thousand, that's how much we got, seventeen million five hundred.
We're not taxing for that full period of time then?
No.
So it would drop off, okay.
Yep. Somebody want to move to approve ordinance eighty-five?
None, none of that goes back to the, to the general fund?
No, it can't.
Well, I thought I read that in, it went back to the general fund if we didn't spend it all.
It just drops off, goes away.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance eighty-five.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. All right, ordinance forty-six, storm water management.
Does consul have any questions on this? We have revisited this a couple of times at work sessions. Adam's here if you do have some questions for him, but.
Counsel, got any questions on?
I guess my question, um, maybe E and F are kind of the same, I'm not sure. What's gonna happen to the safety of our, if we adopt these programs or is this something we have to draw, adopt on a yearly?
I'll let Adam. You wanna go ahead and speak, Adam?
So are you, are you asking about kind of the chloride ordinance, the safety of?
Yeah, the chlorides, the salt usage type of thing.
We're on separate.
No, no, this one's on ordinance forty-six, storm water management.
Yeah.
Just, just ordinance forty-six on this subject.
All right, so ordinance forty-six, i- it's just gonna be a one-time adoption, um, until the MPCA comes out with updated regulations. So, this ordinance covers everything the MPCA is requiring the, the city to do. We don't know what the MPCA is gonna do in a year from now. We might have to update it again. But our old ordinance was, uh, updated in twenty fourteen, so this is kind of just kind of a, um, just kind of wipe the slate clean and, um, just be in compliance again.
Any, any questions for Adam? Any questions? Counsel, your wishes on that one?
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance forty-six.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. Now eighty-four.
I might have been kind of confused between the two, it could kind of go together, but, um, ordinance eighty-four, I believe, from what I was reading in there is we're being told not to use as much, uh, salt and chloride and those type of chemicals to keep the roads at an operable, non-icy.
So, so the ordinance name is kind of misleading. I know it says chloride reduction, but it's not the amount we are using. It's, we're kind of reducing the impact on the environment. So Public Works isn't gonna change anything. It's still gonna be the same amount of salt on the roads. Um, this is just aimed at private businesses that have their own salt storage. So, um, let's say a lawn care company has a couple of tons of salt out back. This just makes it so they have to cover it and make sure it's on, uh, impervious surface. So this isn't gonna reduce any, um, salt that the city uses. It's more of just hoping that that salt is covered and doesn't wash into our storm drains.
Okay, under that ordinance, then who is responsible for the enforcement?
It's gonna be Bill, our Public Works Director, but I will obviously help him with finding those, um, as well.
Site visits, yep.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Want to approve ordinance eighty-four?
I will. I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Item G, consideration of quartel license renewal.
I can start this one off.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute, hang, hang on a second. This is a public hearing. Public, public hearing is open at six fifty-five.
Okay, uh, City of Wake Park, of course, has ordinance one zero five, which is an ordinance that imposes certain requirements on hotels, motels, lodging, uh, institutions that are operated within the city limits of Wake Park. Each of these types of institutions, just for the purpose of the discussion, I'm just gonna call them all hotels. But hotels that operate within Wake Park, they have a requirement every year that they have to seek renewal of their license to operate within the city limits. The license is an item that gets considered by the city council and there's a set of factors, excuse me, just one. There's a set of factors that the city council will look at in making determinations of whether to either grant a license or to renew a license. Now, with respect to the Coratel Hotel by Jasper located at eight one five First Street South in Wake Park, Minnesota, an application for renewal of the license was received by the city. As the, uh, application was being reviewed and the property was being reviewed, there were some, uh, issues with the property that came to light and were of concern to different departments within the City of Wake Park and we wanted to bring those to the attention of the city council. I'm providing an overview on what those issues are and then we have representatives from the police department and I believe we have from, um, inspection as well, oh, there we go, who can give you a little bit more detail on each of these items. In the staff report, we identify them, but essentially there are three large categories that were items of concern. And I'm taking these in an order just to, for the, uh, benefit of the city. There's no particular order of which one's the most important or the most grave. I'm just laying them out for you. Uh, the city council may recall that back in twenty nineteen and in the early part of twenty twenty, the Coratel Hotel are, was an issue on the agenda because of problems that had been discovered with the building code compliance and fire code compliance of the building. The general issues were that there were, um, issues with whether the conditions in the hotel were suitable for habitation, uh, with whether the fire code is being met in terms of signage and, uh, opportunities for, for egress, I think was an issue. I'll defer to inspections and fire on that topic. But there was a set of conditions that the city council placed on the quartel. At that time, I believe it was the Asteria was the name of the property. And those conditions were, were laid out. They were given essentially ninety days to come into compliance. And after the ninety days, the issue was brought back in front of the council. One of the topics in there is that the Asteria Quartel had, uh, has two buildings. We refer to those as the East Building and the West Building. The West Building, in the process that we had in, uh, late twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty, one of the issues there was that it just wasn't up to code and we needed it to either be renovated and remodeled or there had to be some type of plan for its demolition. My understanding from reviewing the record was that there was not money available for renovation remodeling or that it was cost prohibitive. That the idea was that that would be a shuttered space and that, that we'd work towards the demolition of that structure. The city council accepted that as, that's the plan, okay, we understand that's what we're going to be doing. Certainly, we're all mindful of the fact that with the realities that hit us in the pandemic, there became labor shortages, there became increased costs in materials, there became delays in just general how you go about completing projects of large scale. And recognizing all of that, the city did not, um, require an. And recognizing all of that, the city did not, um, require an immediate action from quartel. We wanted to hear that that was the plan, that a plan would be actually pursued and that something would actually be resolved with that. As it turns out, the West Building has not been destroyed or demolished. We're now in twenty twenty-two. Building inspections will be able to give a little bit more detail on this point, but there was a break in a water main, as I understand. And that brought, uh, city inspectors and relevant personnel back to the property to look it over again. And is, that is one of the items that we had, that's an issue of review. Before inspections comes to that, I'm going to touch on the other two just briefly, categories. The other two categories that we have is, uh, use of the, uh, quartel as a permanent residence. That's our second category. As we're all aware, the midterm elections took place in November, in November, uh, November eighth. And there was one or more individuals who came to polling places trying to vote in the City of White Park who identified the quartel as their residence. That, of course, is information that moved along to the city, we became aware of that. And that, uh, generated some, um, investigation, which I believe the police department will speak to, of whether there's any substantiation for people living in a long-term residence form in the hotel. Our understanding is that there are multiple individuals who have been using that space as a long-term residence. As I understand it, from some communications with the police department, we determined that there are people who have been living there or calling it a residence as far back as June of twenty twenty-two, January of twenty twenty-two, and possibly December of twenty twenty-one. I would note, the council will recall that we had an eviction moratorium that was put in place by the governor, Tim Walls. That moratorium ran until June of twenty twenty-two. So I'm raising that point to say that even if we had been aware or had reason to suspect this issue, we wouldn't have really had a, a clear pathway on how to deal with that because of essentially the shelter-in-place attitude, or a policy, I should say, not attitude, but the policy that the state of Minnesota adopted. So certainly, at least up until June of twenty twenty-two, any idea of trying to relocate people out of wherever they were calling a residence probably would not have been a thing we would have been able to act upon. Keith Ellison, the Attorney General, was very adamant about people needed to have shelter and that the moratorium was essentially a very wide-sweeping and broadly interpreted moratorium. It was not the kind of thing that you would be looking for, a lot of exceptions short of an individual posing an immediate and serious threat to the health, safety, and well-being of other individuals who are residing in a, in a residence structure, a place that could be used as accommodations. The last category that we have are nuisance calls related to the quartel. Along with the, uh, review of just whether individuals are spend, are using it as a permanent residence, we had a look at the nature of calls that had been made either about or concerning or related to the quartel. Those, that's another topic for the police department. Last item that I would just want to make sure we're all clear about is that we're, our ordinance is directed at the hotel, about the operation of the hotel. That's who needs to be, um, compliant. And I'm raising that because these are issues that all, uh, raise the question of specific individuals. I don't think that it's appropriate for us in this meeting to go into discussions about the specific individuals, who they are. Part of that is because they, they're private individuals, they have privacy rights. They're not necessarily the ones who are required to follow the ordinance. It's not directed at the individual person. And we do know that, at least in one situation, there is an individual or a group of individuals, and I'm kind of being ambiguous just again for out of respect to the privacy of these people. But there are one or more individuals who are receiving some type of assistance through state programs or county programs. And we certainly don't want to jeopardize that or create, you know, a bureaucratic mess if we delve into the identities of this, of these people and then have any kind of issue come up with those, uh, services that they're receiving, where maybe it turns out that really there's no problem, but we certainly don't want them to have to go through an explanation if they didn't understand or didn't know that this was an ordinance that, um, would prohibit them, for example, from living long-term in a residence. So I'm just putting that comment in to say that if, if there's a need for information about individuals, we should probably approach that or review how we can best do that to limit any kind of fallout or complication for those persons if one were to arise. I don't know that there is one, I'm just being cognizant of the fact that the ordinance is directed at a hotel's operation. So with that, uh, what I'd like to do, if there's no, is I think it would be best if we bring up, um, building inspections to go a little bit into that first issue. And then perhaps what the council would like to do is, is have a public hearing on that topic, then go to the second topic and the third topic. I, I'm not married to any particular way of doing this, but I think that might be a clean way to approach it.
All right, Mitch?
Hi, I'm Mitch, I'm a building official and fire inspector is here. From what I've found out from digging through the file and being on some of the inspections with the state, um, like the most recent one with Kevin Setevy, that there are still, um, fire violations. These inspections happen annually. It's usually with me or somebody from our office. And the state fire marshal, Kevin Setevy, go through and do the hotel housing lodging inspection for fire safety. That includes anything from smoke detectors, egress, emergency lighting. And those are, there's a reason this code requires annual inspections on licensed things. Those are issues that do, that need a checkup on. But when I go through the file, it seems like it's the same issues, but then they just correct them. And then the next inspection comes, same issues, then they correct them. So from an inspection standpoint, I, I don't see any improving being done. Yeah, when we're there and we annotate everything and we give the timeline. But as far as improving, it hasn't. The West Building, like Paul said, um, the council approved and that's a hard timeline of twenty twenty. I went out there to the West Building, I believe, sometime early this spring, um, and met the water department there, because when things warmed up, we found out that the heat wasn't on in the West Building, which helps because nobody was in there, but it froze. And when it thawed, it burst, which took city services for Public Works to get there, shut it off, which emergency shut-offs do happen, but that building, i- it's just taken services, it's just, I don't see improving being done. That's, uh, our recommendation or opinion.
All right.
So the restoration, according to, um, Paul, is never been started?
Uh, as far as the West Building goes, no. The renovation for operations for the East Building were done. Um, mold was abated, corrections were done. But the West Building has just not been occupied and nothing's been done to it. As far as I know.
Is the West Building being used? I would assume it is.
Not the West.
Can't be.
The East Building is being used.
The big one?
Yep.
I'll take my counsel's, uh, advice and this is a public hearing, let's do them a couple at a time then. Maybe we should take, any comments about the West Building?
Comment?
No, from.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, but that building is compliant. The only, we shut the water off and the heat off. The electric is there, gas is there, my cable is on. I didn't want to pay extra money for heat running in the building, so we turned the water off. And in the spring, right before the mirror, it start leaking. It's, wasn't whole flooded building or anything like that. It just start leaking a little bit because the main line that coming from the ground and the pipe goes to the mirror was leaking. So they shut the water from outside and then we never turn it on because we don't use that building. But if you want to have, I, last time they came, six people came, including fire marshal from the state. And he asked, and I said, okay, we can go and look at the building, and they never did. But it's compliant, my smoke detector is on, my exit light is on, my emergency light is on, I just don't use it. If I want to start using it, I have to make the bed, clean the bathroom, turn the water on and. And last time I was going to demolish, but then Mr. Lindquist says I have to have operational all, the whole ninety-four rooms, if I'm remembering correct. So within two weeks, I had to order new furniture, which I already dumped it in a dumpster. But I got to use furniture out of Marriott and put that in. And we have never used the building, but if Mitch or city inspector wants to come tomorrow morning and look at the building, it's just needs, make the bed, clean the bathroom, everything complies. I'm not using it. And if you allow me to take it down, I'll take it down. The last time, my understanding was that I have to fix it. I was going to demolish the building. And then the pandemic hit, I still haven't recovered all my money from two thousand nineteen. But I have source of money that I can still bring the building down if you give me some time. And I guess we do have one individual that's staying and it's one of the city counselor or somebody's helping them to relocate, but they just can't find a place for them and they finally found it. So by January first, they're going to be out. I just can't put family with three kids out on the street.
Who put these people in, in Harms Way though, you did.
We don't know.
You knew you shouldn't be, be renting.
They came.
You knew that, if you didn't know them, then you're in the wrong.
Yes, I, I, yes, we knew. I take fault on that, but on the other building, it's nothing wrong with the building.
That's not what my building official just said.
Well. The only thing right now is the water is shut off from the outside, from the city, because we had, and then we never requested to turn it on because we don't use the building. If I have the water on, I'll have to leave a heat on for no reason, which is the throwing out the money.
All right, anybody else have anything to say on that subject?
I'd just like to make a point of clarification. I have the agenda from February eighteen of twenty twenty, the agenda minutes for February eighteen of twenty twenty. And what we have recorded in those minutes with respect to the West Building was, uh, our building official, Jeff Howe, I'm just reading from the minutes right now. Building official Jeff Howe explained there is a delay in getting a contractor to demolish the West Building. And the cost of demolishing exceeded the cost of renovation, which resulted in the owner deciding to renovate instead of demolishing. So clarification being that, uh, as I understand things, the progress, the sequence, the first proposal was, well, we'll, we'll tear down the West Building, that was the proposal. And then when we returned to the issue in the February twenty twenty agenda, February eighteenth, the update that was given was that the cost of demolishing exceeded renovation. So that was now the new plan, was to renovate it and get it up and running. As in, I, you know, put in a position for occupancy. And obviously, what we're understanding today is that that is not what has been completed with respect to that building. It has not, to my understanding, been used, uh, through twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, up to the present time. Uh, it might be good if we have a little bit more clarification from, uh, Mr. Howe about what the nature of the leak was and maybe a clarification on what were the fire code violations that were found repeated. It did indicate that there have been, uh, code violations was coming to compliance and they turn off or they need to be revisited. I think it might be useful to us if we have that information just, uh, clarified a little bit.
Say, if I can, if I can interject.
Yes.
This is Jeff Howe, this is a building official too.
Yeah, uh, you know, I don't believe that we've, uh, I, the last time we were in that West Building, as far as, as, I don't believe that we've been in there for quite some time to look at the fire code issues. But I know at the last time we were in there, I do believe that, uh, it had been renovated to the point where he could use it if he chose to. Uh, I don't believe, but the, the consistent fire code violations are not in that building. They are in the East Building that continually come up. It's, it's actually in the building that's being used. That building to the West, uh, I would do, I, I act, actually have to agree with, with the building owner that if, if they fix the water line coming into the building, turn the heat on, they could use that building. I think the biggest problem with it, the rooms are so small, I don't think anybody would want to rent them. But that's a totally separate issue, but that's my recollection of the last time I was in that building.
Okay, Jeff, I have a question for you then. Was there ever a letter of occupancy given to the owner of the motel for that? If the renovations were done properly, if they were inspected properly? I, uh, has there been a letter of occupant, given to him so he can occupy it?
Well, I don't think we reissued, because all he, all that was done there was they removed the mold, they removed the carpet, they, and they, and they redid the fire alarm system, which right now, if we went in there again, they'd have to redo the fire alarm system again, I'm sure, because it, it hasn't been used in quite some time and it hasn't been certified.
No, it, it is working and we just had, uh, maintenance done and replace a whole fire panel by submit fire protection.
In, in the East Building or the West Building?
In the East Building or the West?
It's still connect, all connected to the same, it's still zoning the other building.
There's a new panel in the West Building, yep.
Yeah, and it's connected to, it, it's, it's still connected to the other building. So. And they're saying we're consistent in a fire inspection, the state fire marshal only had three things, which is one of the emergency light, it was one second delayed. It was working when we checked, it's coming out one second delayed. So he said, check on maybe the battery or replace it and we replaced the whole light. It was working, but somehow it was one second delayed when you push the button. And the carbon monoxide that he didn't, I myself requested to submit fire protection to do it before even fire marshal gave me this, because the state approved that all the hotels have to have, uh, carbon monoxide wherever you have a gas line. So it's been ordered by, by me to submit protections. We have a contract here too, and I already sent it to Kevin, the state fire marshal. And there's one smoke detector battery was, somebody took the wire out, we didn't know. And while he was standing, it just needed to be plugged with two plugs. And he was done and he, he said it in his report.
Hey, is there anybody else who wants to speak?
There is no big fire, fire code that says that this building is not capable of living just the minor things and he's giving me sixty days to fix it.
You know, the problem is, we've given that hotel sixty days, sixty days, sixty days, sixty years, sixty centuries, sixty thousand.
Everything's not going to be a hundred percent all the time, there's.
Yeah, it is, it, it, it has to be, it, it has to be a hundred percent all the time or be, being fixed in a short period of time. You're renting this to me, to my family, to my grandchildren. And, and you, and you don't seem like you ever care if they have carbon dioxide poisoning, if they're living in mold, if the place burns down and the fire alarm.
There is no mold in a building.
You don't seem, you don't seem to care. Every time you, every time somebody from that organization comes here, all we get is a big sob story. And I'm sorry for the people that live there now, because that's not their fault. That's, that's on you, that is on you. You're the one that should have said, I'm sorry, you can stay here for seven days and that's all you can stay here. I, I don't know what that is, I, I didn't read it, but you can't stay here for seven months. That's on you.
That's, that's, I, I take blame for that, yes.
But why, but, but you're wasting our time, every year you waste our time on this.
That's, that's one family that's been staying, so.
Let's do the primary residence one, as long as I got on that kick.
Okay, I don't know if that's Chief Ben Trude or if that's Egert, who's covering that one. But in the basics there is that we had, uh, come to understand that there are individuals who are living there in a long-term fashion. At first, as I alluded to previously, uh, one or more individuals at polling places identified the quartel as their residence. That's why they were voting ostensibly in the City of White Park. Along with that, there was a review of the log of guests who have stayed in the hotel. That was performed by the White Park Police Department. I think it'd be more appropriate for them to speak to details on that. Again, but I, uh, just to reiterate, individual persons, for the sake of their privacy and just that this really isn't about them per se, uh, we're probably avoiding any reference to the names of the people.
Chief?
Uh, Mayor, Member of the Councils?
Mayor, Mayor of the Councils, as far as the extended stays, investigator Jeff Egert is here. He did a deeper dive into the situations of individuals staying for long periods of time. And we've basically identified three situations. And again, as, as Paul shared, I'm not going to give names, but we, we have a family with children that we believe has been living there at Corotel since December fourteenth of last year, so a little over a year ago. We have a, a couple, for lack of a better term, been staying there since January fourteenth of twenty twenty-two. And what appears to be a single individual has been there since June second of twenty twenty-two. Investigator Egert was able to establish a pattern of, of check-in and checkout practices that could only be done through staff or ownership of the hotel. Perhaps somewhat circumstantial, but the pattern is very clear of, of checking this, these parties out of the hotel, checking them out on a, on another date and then checking them back in on the very same date over and over and over again. So again, investigator Egert is here. If you had questions for him about that, about his investigation there. But I think it's pretty clear that we have established that, at least in three cases, there have been individuals that have been staying there for an extensive period of time.
Give me your sob story on that one now, because this is where we go every time. I didn't know it, I didn't know it, I didn't know it. And I tell you what, if I own that building, I damn well know who was in and out of there every day. Because those rooms should be cleaned, there's not cooking facilities in those rooms.
Well, if somebody checks out in the morning and they decide to come back in the evening to check back in.
And you don't know that?
No, but you can only rent a room one time, only once to, if you come to my hotel as a regular, some customer comes in.
Been doing this for a whole year. Not just one time. They didn't, they didn't come here and say, oh, by golly, I like the area so much. Can I check back in on my seven days are up? I'm gonna check back in for another seven days. This went on for a year, a year. This is on you.
Paul, I got a question for you on this. We suspended their license back in twenty nineteen, I believe it was?
Yes, there was a.
There was, in that suspension, if I remember correctly, it was this same thing was going on. He was well informed at the time of the ordinance and how the ordinance works. He gave us his word, I believe, during that, we're going through the same thing, that that would not happen again. But as the mayor is stating, it's going on and on and on. Under our ordinance as a second or major violator, what are our options for those types of things?
Well, what we're consider, what we have as an issue today is the renewal of a license. So the ordinance has two categories to it, the revocation of a license. So someone will just, for purpose of discussion, a license is issued January one. From January one through the year, the three hundred and sixty-five day period, if things happen in that period, the council has the option of considering the revocation of a license. What we did was, we did kind of a conditional revocation. Now, this was, this was in the transition between attorney Gordon Hansmeyer and myself. Gordon Hansmeyer was the city attorney when this issue came up in twenty nineteen and then kind of went under my plate after he stepped down into his retirement. But we have a renewal today. So the options that are in front of the council are to approve the renewal of a license, to deny the renewal of a license. And I would say that you would be able to place a condition, if you wanted, on a reapplication. If the council were to say, we would deny this app, or this renewal request and in order for you to come forward and make another attempt at renewing the license, here's our one, two, three requirements. That's essentially what happened with the revocation that took place. It was a revocation that was for a short period of time with a set of conditions. The council said, if you do these things, then we'll let the hotel go back into operation. It was essentially a, you're, you're kind of moving to the, to the edge of whether we're even gonna let the business continue or not. These are the things we want to see in order for the, the license to be reinstated. But today, your options are to deny the license, approve the license. If you wanted to place conditions on, I believe you could do that to say, you know, we're denying it today, but if you do X, Y, Z by such and such date, then we'll reconsider the issue. But that's really what's in front of the council today.
So we can deny it with no chance of renewing? Or is it just denied and they can come back six months from now and ask for a permit to operate?
I'm gonna double check the section, just to make sure that I'm giving you the appropriate guidance on that. If you were to deny the license to operate, technically, a request for a license could be submitted to the council again. You could consider it again. You could choose to deny it again if you were to want to do that. I don't believe that you would be able to say flat out, we're denying this license and no one can ever come back here and try to pursue a license. For example, if the ownership of the property were transferred, if somebody else purchased it and they wanted to come and seek a license and they've demonstrated that the building is to a level that the, that is within the requirements of the ordinance and meets the concerns of the council, then, you know, certainly you couldn't, I don't think it would be, it would be correct. I don't think you'd be able to say, no, this, this property is forever verboten. But if the current owner were to come with a new renewal, you would have to consider it from the factors that you have in your ordinance. So there would be the option to file or to make a second request for a license and, you know, a month from now, six months from now, whatever period of time is necessary to deal with ever, whatever concerns are there. But if we're denying a license today, if that's the route that the council chooses to go, there'd need to be some clarification of the reasons why it's being denied. And then ostensibly, if those reasons are corrected, you could consider the license application again and decide whether or not it meets all of your requirements. It's not as if you wouldn't be able to look at it and say, well, that's all fine and good, but now we're aware of a new issue with the building. There's perhaps, you know, we've talked about mold in the past. If a mold concern were to appear in the building again, you would still have the option of things that are not part of today's discussion being a reason for why a license would not be renewed, provided that there's, you know, obviously documentation or support for whatever those reasons may be.
I've got one question for Dave. In here, there were a certain amount of calls, nuisance-related calls, complaints to that facility. Has that dwindled from the previous or has it kind of continued to be a area of concern?
Counsel Lindquist, I would say that, and I've been familiar with this property my entire time here as police chief, and so the last fifteen years, I can tell you that the, the calls for service at this location are significantly less than what I've seen probably at its worst. We have, and if I could just, maybe this is the time just to kind of review some of that. When it comes to nuisance calls for service, it's very difficult to define what a nuisance call or as our statute talks about, a serious nuisance. Of the eighty-three calls that we have, twenty-six of those calls, eighty-three calls, and this is in the year, this year-to-date, twenty twenty-two, twenty-six of those calls were our officers initiating contact with the hotel, which is something that we've encouraged them to do. It also might be the fact that they stopped a vehicle and that vehicle randomly pulled into Corotel's lot and they ended up being a DUI. Now, is that Corotel's fault? No. But that's one of the calls. They, they rent a room to somebody off the street or driving through town. They get into a domestic. Is that Corotel's or any hotel's fault? Not necessarily, in my opinion. Because I think when we look at all of our hotels, we can find situations that might be considered, in that case, be considered nuisance, which I don't, so we gotta be kind of careful with that. Eleven of the eighty-three calls from, came from Corotel staff. And of course, we want staff to be calling us if they're, they're having a, a problem. Unfortunately, in this case, neither investigator Egert or myself is aware of any phone calls that we got from Corotel to telling us, hey, we've got some individuals that are staying here. We gotta find a, a different place. Those calls didn't happen as far as we can tell. And I have no doubt there are situations that, living in a, in a, maybe in a budget motel might be the last stop before living in their car. I understand that part of it too. But we, we did not get that call from them, letting us know that they had a, a, a problem. Thirteen of the eighty-three calls involved six people who had at least two or more calls for service. So, you know, that might be something that is considered a nuisance call. When they, they rent a room once, there's a problem. You know, that's, is that a nuisance call? They rent to that person again and there's another nuisance call. That's maybe something that could be.
Yes, we don't.
Held to the manager.
We don't rent it to them, but they have their grandfather or father or somebody.
Right.
Come in and rent it for them. And when we see them, we try to put them out.
Yep.
And we do.
So twenty-three calls that are kind of in a other category that may or may not be considered nuisance. We have a medical, medicals happen at every hotel. It happened throughout every, every neighborhood in our city. So it's, it's really hard to, to necessarily establish that we've, we have had a serious nuisance problem. The calls for service in the past have been much higher at different times. As far as serious crime, we had an egg robbery there. The staff called, they were the victims of an armed robbery. And then otherwise, we had a crim sex one, which is a very serious crime. But that's about the only one. We, we picked up one person on a felony warrant. We had a fifth degree crim sex, which is serious too, but I think statutorily is probably a misdemeanor, if I recall, or maybe a gross. So, you know, as far as serious nuisance-related, those numbers are just, are not really there. But certainly, we've had our share of calls there over this past year.
So you got any questions or comments?
I'm really having difficulty trying to figure this out. We've told you repeatedly, there are things you have to do to be running a decent hotel in Wake Park. And yet you come back today with the same story that we heard the last time we went through all of this. And I'm trying to figure out why we would want to say, yeah, go ahead and do this some more. We don't care. We do care. And I, for one, find it really, really difficult to think that we would renew your license under the current circumstances. You know, if up to me, my, my position would be, no, we're gonna deny the license. Get your place and you get your ducks back in order, come back and ask for a new license. But until you do that, I'm not comfortable in saying, yeah, I'm gonna give you a license with conditions. We've already done that. You still haven't met those. So I don't see any reason why we should do that unless you have something compelling to tell us that we don't already know about your operation. Not just my personal opinion.
Well, the building does comply for the fire code and everything now. As far as like, police chief said, there's been, police comes, run to parking lot, they run a license plate, if somebody have a warrant, is it my fault? Then they come in and they arrest the person. There's been at least two to three traffic stop every month and they pull into my parking lot.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the thirty nuisance calls after listening to the chief. I mean, I, they're, they're way less than what we had years ago and they're.
Every year, it's been decreasing and we've been trying and trying.
But I am concerned that, that you've let people, that, that you haven't fixed up the West Wing or knocked it down.
No, we fixed, it's operable.
It's not being.
Like Jeff said.
It's not being used, right?
That's, that's right. I'm not using it, but it's comply to all the fire.
How can you afford to leave it sit empty? My building official says it's, it's.
It does, it's, I don't, that's where my main problem was with all the main activities with the customers because it's nobody there, decide we can manage it more.
I have a question for our building official. Can you take over the microphone, please?
Yep.
Back in twenty nineteen, we were told that we were gonna give them a break, get things cleaned up. The West was either gonna be tore down or reconditioned. Has the reconditioning and the redoing, remodeling been done properly and up to code? I'm hearing of things breaking, which is normal in a, in a business. But we have not had a report from you as building officials on that building being finished and being able to be occupied.
As far as, I've never walked through that for licensing, which normally takes compliance to get license. So I haven't done that. I didn't see the records. Jeff said he may have been there. Jeff would like to talk about.
I, I am, I was in that building after it was, after it was renovated. So it was, it was actually, everything was cleaned up and it complied.